Okay, I guess we'll call our agenda-setting meeting for July 2nd to order and turn it over to our veteran staff here. Let's see. Uh, Lou, you want to start out with Jim?
All right.
Or Jim, sorry.
That's okay. So our summer reading problem program, not a problem. We're all. I'm thrown off today by this earlier time. Our summer reading program started last month and we're off to a great start. We have 68 children and teens signed up at this point and have had really good turn notes for projects and programs. We are also set for tomorrow. We will be participating once again in the 3rd of July activities and we'll have crafts to make and take in the library from 10 to 5:00. And all are welcome for that. The library will be closed on July 4th for Independence Day and recovery. We have two programs coming up this month that are sponsored by Arrowhead Library System. The first is on July 12th and will be all about falcons. We will host Jackie Fallon at 3:30 in the library as she shares her peregrine falcons and other raptors and knowledge. Then we have Will Hale's tadpole parade. There will be a lot of fun and singing for that one. This will be on July 18th at 10:30 and is geared more towards 2 to 10-year-olds, but all are welcome. And this was funded in part or whole by the Minnesota Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund. And then the library has made some recent upgrades. We have new printers and computer chairs as well as new educational toys in the children's area. We continue to work on upgrading our technology in different areas of the library and as always, we appreciate the feedback and support. And we hope you all have a happy and safe 4th.
Thank you. Sounds like a lot of activity.
Oh, yeah.
Should be an attractive summer there.
Hey, Jim, a quick question. Are you able to keep track of how many people come through the library?
We have sampling weeks that we do that. So we have four sampling weeks a year that we track, just in weeks, in general. And then we've done time studies and stuff before, so, yeah, we can, but.
All right. I'm just curious, how many people use the library?
Oh, yeah. Lot more lately, actually. We've had a lot more people in and out, so that's great, but I don't have an exact number.
You didn't have any water problems with the rain or anything?
We did have some water problems, yep.
But manageable?
Uh, we're managing it as we speak, actually.
As we speak, okay. All right, city attorney?
I think this time just what's on the agenda.
All right, let's see, we're gonna have our engineering report. Let's see. This is the administrator, how do you want to proceed?
Yep, if Kate is with us, you guys have asked for a text leg up presentation. And Kate, if you're there listening, we can have him pop on and.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just keep this real short. Lindsay just wanted me to kind of show you how this works. These are the system and just answer any questions you have. So, do I have the ability to share my screen here? Let's see. Can you see that there?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So just real quick, we work with small cities and counties all over the country. We have about 700 agencies working with a few small towns in Minnesota as well as a few counties like Lyon and the Seward that we're working with to kind of streamline the communications to the residents in the communities. One way that we kind of get the marketing out is putting a little widget onto the website to let people know how to kind of sign up for the system, how to use the system, and kind of helps that way as well. So, this is Lyon County's website. This is kind of how people opt into that. They can click on this little button, put their phone number right there, and that helps them to receiving those text alerts from the Seward, sorry, Lyon County. That's how they're using it right now. It was one of those kind of City of Inkley, same thing. They can opt in right there on their website to receive those alert notifications from the city. So everything from this is managed from this web portal, so you don't need personal cellphones or city cellphones to manage any of this. Any device, computer, laptop, tablet, phone that has a web browser, you can log into to be able to send out these notifications. So how we do that is we just click on the notifications tab. We have the ability to set up different groups. So one thing that kind of sets us apart from like email blasts or anything like that, this doesn't have to be a mass text every single time. The residents can opt into very specific information. So if they only want to receive weather alerts, if they only want to receive election notifications, we can set up these different groups. So then residents, all they have to do is text 91896. They text a keyword like "city events," and that would opt them into getting those city event notifications. So then to send out those, we would just select the group or groups that we send it out to. So maybe we're doing a weather alert, we select that group. We type our message in this little box here, so maybe flooding, whatever that message may be. This can even include images, PDFs, or links to websites. So if you need to get certain information out, then there would just be a green send button. Hit send, and then everyone opted into that group would get that text message very immediately. So it's very quick, very easy to send those out. Like I said, working with so many agencies across the country, we even see a huge influx of older residents using this as well, because you don't have to have a smartphone to use this. Any cellphone that sends received texts, they can do that. In fact, we work with a lot of older residents down in Florida. We have whole retirement communities using this to kind of get event notifications out, things like that. The next piece of this notification is we can send out map-specific notifications. So if there are certain things like flooding or city maintenance, there's roads that need to be shut down, water things, we can send out specific notifications by just a few clicks on a map. We draw a little box around a neighborhood, and then we could save that selection, which would then create a group based off of that area in the city and send out notifications just based off of that. So very quick way to disperse information. We make this as easy as possible. We can even provide a database so that residents would then just get a welcome text message saying, hey, this is our new alert system. This is how we'll let you know of severe weather, emergency situations, or things like election or billing reminders. We can quickly send out those notifications. And then if they don't want to receive those, they can simply reply stop and maybe opt it out. So it's a very easy opt-in, opt-out process. And I'm sure you guys have received texts, reminders of upcoming appointments from doctors or dentists, things like that. Very similar to that, we just kind of take this technology and design this specifically for municipalities. So, that is a really quick rundown. Are there any specific questions kind of on how that works?
Just a question on data. A lot of citizens are very guarded about to whom and how much data they give. What, obviously, you need a phone number, you need an address, a name. Are there other data points that citizens would be asked to provide to this system or not?
So, yeah, you're exactly right. So we would, if they wanted to sign up to receive that, we just collect their phone number, so they don't have to give out any other information if they don't want to. When we do do the database import, it will collect that information as well as like a unique identifier, like a partial ID number that would then put their point on this map to be notified for that. But again, if they don't want to, it's an easy opt-out process of just replying stop, and then we can remove them from the list.
City attorney, on data practices, would there be any issues whether this is personal protected data or?
I don't think so. I mean, if they're opting in, then they've agreed to provide that information. They understand that it's, you know, all out there, that they're doing it. Have you come into that question with other communities that all, Kate, or no?
A little bit, but yeah. Again, the opt-in process is pre-spelled out. If they provide their phone number, then they are opted in to receive those notifications. And also giving them the option to opt-outs kind of covers that. But also to note, we are a FOIA compliant system, so we have all the security measures in place and the national, you know, registry of that information to be able to make sure that everyone's data is protected. We don't do anything with it. It is all owned by you in your system. And so, all the security measures are in place to make sure that that information isn't shared outside of this.
Thank you.
Hey, Kate, how many notifications does a Inkley send out in a month? City of Inkley or City of Ada or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, so it kind of depends on how they want to use it. We have every city kind of using it differently. We kind of base their system off their population, so I think same thing with you. We give you about 10,000 text messages worth a year, and those don't expire. They will roll over to the next year if you don't end up using that. So it's hard to say based off of specific town each month, because it is kind of an ebb and flow. Certain times of the year, maybe you'll send out a lot more regarding elections or snow removal or flooding during the summertime. But based off of that initial amount, that's kind of what we see typical cities using of your size, around that 10,000 a year mark. So it's a little under 1,000 text messages per month.
Okay, 1,000? Wow. And who generates those? I mean, with like Lindsay's staff? But you think, you think these small towns are sending out 1,000 a month?
If you had a blanket email, or not email, I mean, if there's a blanket notice, is that what you've?
I'm talking about.
Is that one or is that like 100?
Yeah, because I'm talking about individual.
Like messages?
Here's one message, here's another message, here's another, you know, different topics.
Yeah, so again, it kind of depending on the month, but if you had, so in this case, you had 1,000 people sign up to receive those alerts. If you sent out a weather alert to all 1,000 of those, that would be 1,000 text messages.
Okay. So the city staffs are sending out maybe 10 a month?
Maybe, yeah. Again, it's kind of depending. So maybe in the summer, you have a parade for 4th of July. You'd send that out. If you had 1,000 people opted in, that would be 1,000. And then maybe later in the month, you had another notice that needs to go out. Yeah, it's kind of just per text that you send out and how many people are opted into those groups to receive those.
Okay. I would see it ran like, for example, you get the public hearing that affected a quarter-mile radius, you just do that. That would only send out maybe 30 there, you know? If you're doing full, like, election thing, congratulations to Mayor so-and-so who was elected. Anybody who would sign up for those ones would receive them. Snowpaw, emergency for the whole town, you'd hit everybody. But certain things, you, staff would only send out the specific ones to the ones who wanted to know about them, and then the whole town and the other ones. If I'm reading that right, Kate.
Yeah, and it's also just, I mean, there are lots and lots of research done behind texting of 98% of texts are read within the first three minutes of sending them out. So there's huge benefit to the texting programs. Quicker response, you can see, like I said, being the FOIA compliant system, you can see the communications that are going out. You can see that they are being delivered. Whereas things like email, Facebook, they aren't checked regularly. Emails go to spam a lot. Even mailers get lost in the mail and you don't know where they're going to. So the texting kind of solves those problems of eliminating costs with mailers and just things surrounding that. So yeah, just the communities we work with, it helps solve a lot of those problems.
I'm no techie, but you can see that this is probably the future.
Yeah.
It's just a cost-benefit analysis and like the council's indicated, well, we don't know what's going on. Well, we try to get information out there. This is just another tool. You know, if you don't know what's going on in the City of Aurora, you're not really applying yourself to.
The transparency that we always talk about trying to enhance.
I'm not a techer or hacky, but, or hacker, but have you had any issues with, with umpteen people accessing the system with their own private phones? Have you had any issues with someone, somehow the system getting corrupted and getting messages that going out to people that weren't generated by staff? You know?
We haven't run into that. Like I said, we have many layers of security in place so that we can prevent those things. And we can limit your staff depending on what kind of access they have. So if you have certain people like Lindsay that would need to kind of manage the whole system, she might have full access, and then you could maybe limit access to certain parts of it depending on your staff. So that is something that we can work through depending on how you want to use and set up the system.
All right, well, thanks very much. I think in the interest of our limited time on the agenda setting, we'll have to move on to some other items. Thank you.
Okay.
It's kind of an exciting program.
Yeah, you bet. Okay, thanks so much for your time.
Very good. Moving on to our city engineer.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So I had an update in the packet. I'll just walk through. I did see in the packet this Department of Health Plan Review Approval was included. What this is, is so for the CASAT 100 project, we're beginning, we're gonna, hopefully we're gonna include some water main improvements with that project. And so what we did to make sure we were eligible for PFA financing, potential grant eligibility, we did like, I'd call it a 60% plan, submitted it to the Department of Health for review. They review it, certify that it meets all their requirements. What that allows us to do is to move higher on the, on the PPL. So we're essentially positioning the CASAT 100 utilities for better grant eligibility. What this is, is them responding, saying, we approve of your design as submitted. It's not locked in, we can still change things as the project develops, we're just trying to get ourselves higher on the list. So, it's a little bit of a game, but you gotta play it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what that is. They didn't have any major concerns. It's all, all pretty standard language. The industrial park, so the big update there, so at the last council meeting, council approved that, that GMP on June 18th. So since then, we've submitted plans to aid Alson Peterson to solicit quotes for the roadway. So those will be received tomorrow. So I would anticipate at the next council meeting, we'll know full, full cost of the West Indios River Park, how it fits with our $15 million budget. The wetland permit, so we've been talking since, since last December, that was the critical path piece. So right away this spring, we got out, got the delineation and worked through the permitting process in June, so that went in for review to the, to the local agencies and state agencies. So the next step on the wetlands, so we'll have a TEP meeting, which is a technical valuation panel. So it is, it's a rep from the city, the SWCD, and I think the county meet on site, they go over the delineation. Basically, everyone concurs that this, this is appropriate. We move forward with the permitting process. So no activity will occur until that meeting. So basically, we don't want to go grade outside of what we think is wetlands, and if the wetland line changes, well, then we're in trouble. So we'll hold off on any grading, even outside of the wetland, until we have that meeting. Once that meeting happens, AP and their contractor will likely start doing grading outside the wetland areas. We should have the wetland permit fully approved. I would anticipate sometime in August, and then they could begin grading in wetlands as well. So that one should be picking up steam here by the end of summer. Any questions on the industrial park?
So if that approval doesn't come through timely, we can still work on other elements of the, of the site?
Correct, correct. It's just like any other project, right? Like you can work outside the wetland, you just can't impact the wetland until you have permission to do that.
So it's not gonna in any way hold up the project, or it doesn't look like it at this point in time?
There's plenty of work for them to do outside the wetlands. As long as we come through on that timely matter, we should be just fine.
And so we're looking at starting in August now?
Probably closer to August 1st. It could be late July. Basically, our, our direction to AP is like, hey, don't put equipment out there until this meeting is over. Like, there's nothing worse than, you're talking about wetlands and the backhoe is sitting right there, just as bad tapped. So, anything else on, on that project? West 3rd Avenue Alley, so no real big update on that. That's the alley between 3rd and 4th Avenue from, from 4th Street to 1st Street by the, by the Lucky Seven Gas Station. We're at like a 95% plan, so, so the, currently it's unfunded, but the plan is to go after some IRRR infrastructure money. So that, that funding cycle renewed July 1st, and so we'll be working with staff to, to go after that. West 1st Avenue, so we received that LRIP grant from MinDOT. We have water main and, and sanitary sewer facilities on that, or utilities on that project. So we were originally targeting a 2025 construction year, but working with staff and based on some recent knowledge, so we submitted to get on the Clean Water Fund PPL. We were able to use the wastewater facility plan, which makes us very high on grant eligibility for, for sewer replacement. But without a bonding bill, they didn't replenish those funds. And so, working with staff, it makes sense to kick it to 2026. Hopefully, they can pass a bonding bill this next legislative cycle, which will refund PFA, which this project will be high, scored very highly, so it'll be very likely grant-eligible. And so it will help cover some of the utility replacement cost. So there's no reason we couldn't build it in 2025, it's just there's, there's a, a good chance we could get grant funds if we waited till 2026. And so then that would give us potential grant funds for the utilities, and then obviously we know we have 1.5 million for the, for the roadway improvements. So kicking to 2026, you know, there is a good chance that, you know, a lot of this project could be funded through, through grants. So, any questions on 1st Avenue? So that one is sitting at, I'm, plans are pretty much on the shelf, so it's just kind of working through the funding mechanisms. 2023 CDVG project, so Pine Grove Parking Lot. So the contractor is out there today finishing up seating. They had some topsoil to replace, some gravel to fix, and then, and seating. It's on my, I told them to get the pickleball court seated again. I've been very vocal with Jordan too to make sure that happens, so we'll see where we.
Some dirt too, because it just didn't take.
Yeah.
Getting washed out, or what?
The soil that's there isn't really, oh, it's a caliber that.
Growing, yeah. Now, sharing any frustration, the, the length of time it took to get them back on site. It's been a struggle to get them there, but they're there. Overall, so the original contract amount on that was $187,999. I would expect we're gonna come in around 180. So, really what that is, is when I do my bid quantity estimates, I go a little high on my assumed density, just so you have a little fluff. So when you pay by the tonnage, sometimes contractors, they bring in a little more because they make a little more, so we try and overestimate that a little bit.
So this is 180,000 for what?
So our final project cost will be 180,000.
For which project?
Pine Grove Park.
Pine Grove, okay.
Yes. The 2024 CDVG project, so in your packet tonight is the, the bid results for the, the Central Avenue pavement repairs. So we got three quotes, one from Masabi Batuminas, one from Cinnit Blacktop out of Duluth, and then one from KGM. Engineer's estimate was about 143,000. Bids were all, all over the board. KGM was the low bidder at 111,758. I think Masabi bid was like 150, and then Cinnit was like 220. So, pretty good spread. But KGM was, was like 30,000 under Engineer's estimate, so I mean, it's, it's a good bid. Sounds like they're gonna go with it. I don't, I haven't had anything to indicate they would back out of that. Be very rare for them to do that, but it would be my recommendation. It's council's soft fit to, to award that contract to KGM. Canuti Drive Housing Development. So we had a scope of work that was approved by council back in April or May, so we're working through the steps. We've completed the ALTA survey and the wetland delineation. We've worked through preliminary design. In the packet is a, is a concept that, that I'd call 90%. It's not plotted at this point or anything like that. This is just strictly the concept we're gonna work with to move through with the preliminary design phase. So there will be, there will be some wetland impacts. There's kind of this finger that comes up the middle, most of that will be impacted, but we're putting emphasis on protecting the wetlands on that west side as much as we can, and then even on the east side, we want to protect that, that low boundary as much as we can. So just running the math, the amount of fill that you'd have to bring in and the cost to mitigate that wetland, it's just, it's not worth the four or five lots you would get out of it.
So there won't be any lots behind your east street, then, Lindsay?
Correct, correct. So that'll, that'll generally look like it does today. We did clear some trees, they're probably gonna clear the rest of the trees, but overall, that'll still be a wet, wet land area.
Clear the rest of what trees?
Because I think there's some trees in there and stuff, so I'm, so we.
In the utility quarter?
Correct.
There's still some trees left, isn't there? No, seriously, I didn't, I thought they did a good job.
Oh, yeah. I think so.
Yeah.
Last time I was out there, I, they, so they cleared 100 feet. This is probably, it's probably 220 feet wide. So by the time we grade the road, entire road slopes, I mean, there's gonna be some, some impacts on that west side of that wetland, so. But these are all quarter-acre lots. I think minimum width is like 90 feet, and then minimum depth is 150. So they're all sizable, I mean, comfortable lots, for sure. Nothing is set in stone on this. I mean, we haven't plotted any of this. There's still opportunity to change lot dimensions and housing type. It's not gonna change the street design, the pond design, utility design, anything like that. So I mean, if there's any concerns or further discussions needed, then we have, we have plenty of time to do that, so. I would anticipate having preliminary design wrapped up in the next month or two on this. That would include kind of a, a street layout, utilities will be laid out, and then cost estimates to move it forward. Any questions?
We're beginning to run out of time here.
Are we? Okay, I'll wrap it up. Thank you, Mayor. The last few items, Stormwater Resiliency Planning Grants, we're in the initial phases of that, working through building the, the city model of the stormwater system, so that'll model the, the hydrology, which is the surface runoff, and then the hydro, hydraulics, which is the actual movement of the water in the storm sewer. So looking at capacities and flooding across the city. Last item here I have, capital improvement plans. We met with staff a couple weeks ago, worked through capital improvement plan. We have the tools we needed, so I'm just putting some numbers together, estimates for each project, and we'll bring that to council likely early August. The goal, to keep updating that on an annual basis, just so we're keep looking forward and we have a plan and, and understanding of what we want to do. And then the last item, lead service line inventory, we're about 80% through Aurora's. On target to meet the, the state deadlines, so. Down to just a few door-to-door, just to get the last few off, off the list, so.
Great.
To my knowledge, we haven't found a single lead service line yet, so.
Really? That is remarkable.
That is.
Richard, you don't know of any?
There's probably some out there, but between the street and the house.
Okay.
And it'll come into the house, yeah.
Everything we're looking at's inside the house, that they're very well could be between the main and the curb.
Well, let's see. City Administrator, anything in the last minute?
No, I would just add that a lot of what Josh is going through, we're gonna talk at our budget priority meeting on the 11th. So a lot of it is gonna be trying to focus which CDVG funds we define for, which IRRR funds, to which projects, and where we're at. So I know he went over a lot in a very short time, but we'll dive into it a lot deeper at that meeting, so.
Very good. I believe it's time to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn in this meeting? I'll make the motion to adjourn. By Councilor McClosage, supported by Councilor Hanson, seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. We can stand adjourned for about a minute, I think.
Have a good day, everyone.
See you, Jen.
Well, that clock is really off.
What's that?
The clock.
John, I've got your slide up there, so as you're talking, I can just zip through them as well, too.
Do you know if I sat over there or?
Sure, yeah, you can move right under the gentleman's hat.
Yeah. All right, I see the clock is at 2:30, and I'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular Tuesday meeting of the council that's just been scheduled earlier to kind of accommodate some of the July 3rd events and otherwise allow the staff to prepare for their enjoyment of the holidays. Can we have a roll call, please?
Dooley?
Here.
McClosage?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Hess?
Here.
Gregor?
Here.
So we have a full complement. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda, Agenda Item 4 is the Consent Agenda. I just literally printed this off less than, about an hour ago, before I came here. I personally would like to, if we could, approve the Agenda Items 6 and 7. And if, are there any travel requests?
No.
No, okay. So 6 and 7, and then table the other items for consideration at our second meeting of the month, just so we had a chance to read them. Now, I mean, I could just abstain or something, but that was my resolution, my personal situation. I don't know if the rest of you have adequately studied those materials or not. So I would move approval of the Consent Agenda, including only Agenda Items 6, 7. And, so the Administrator, any others that are urgent, or?
Well, not that I'm aware of, looking through these here.
All right. And with the intent, I suppose, in a separate motion to table the other items on the Consent Agenda, is there support from a motion?
Would that include number 5 as well, the minutes?
I personally would like to read the minutes.
Of the patents in Chester, can you talk?
I did not get them until this afternoon at mailing. So, I mean, again, if the rest of you feel comfortable, I think in the interest of moving the city business along, by all means, go along with just the normal consent agenda. Counselors, preferences, or?
I read through them, I didn't see any issues with them.
Yeah, so did I.
Okay. So why don't, do I interpret that as a motion for the full consent agenda approval?
I already got a motion on the floor.
I could withdraw that. Because there was no second.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items.
Support?
I'll support it.
Supported by Councilor Hess. Any further discussions? Well, I'm going to abstain, okay, just because of good conscience, I haven't read them, yeah, so. But any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed? And abstentions, one. All right, moving on with the agenda. Let's say appearances, I don't see anyone present, and no one's online. The city administrator, Gregor? All right. And we've had reports from our staff members. So moving on down, this would be the portion of the agenda at 14, where we get reports from counselors. Councilor Godey?
Well, 12. 12.1.
12.1.
The alley issue, I don't know if Josh, you said, or Josh?
That was under-
That was under consent.
Oh, that was under consent, okay. I was just curious, what are we going to do to try and mitigate? I walked on that alley, it is pretty-
I mean, the best we can do at this point is puddle patching, you know, try to fill the low spots with some patch repair.
There's a pretty big swale in the middle, and then there's holes on both sides. I don't know if it's hard to drag, but it's close.
Yeah. I mean, we could fill in the, some puddle patches, what the best we can do at this point.
All right. Any other?
Just a question.
Yeah, just a question, okay. So go ahead, again, the reports from counselors. Councilor Godey?
Yeah, the planning and zoning, it's that time of year where the permits are, requests are starting to pick up. The one thing I'd like to mention is, we had a request, and this has happened in the past, where a renter requests a permit, and we don't feel we should give approval to a permit for the person who doesn't own the land. So they should have something from the landowner that supports, or have the landowner request the permit, and then the renter can do the work. But we shouldn't give a permit just to a renter. And, like I said, the permit numbers have been picking up, and part of that is to the success of the HRA's grants, that they're matching grants that they're giving out. 20 people were approved, and most of them need a permit, so we see more and more work being done in Aurora. The other thing I'd like to mention is, I didn't give any attaboys for a while to the fire department, but they're busy with all the 4th of July stuff. You know, there's a lot of things that go into meetings and lining up people to drive the trucks and help with the parades and fireworks. And I know they're only a small part of making it a successful celebration, but they basically give up the whole day to volunteer their time. You know, they're the last ones up on the hill with the fireworks at the end of the night, so, yeah. I'd just like to thank the fire department. That's about all I have.
Thank you, counselor. Councilor McClosage?
Yeah, the last parks meeting, we had to cancel due to conflicts with people, being there, myself, Luke, such. But we have two items that are hot, not hot, one's hot, is getting a solution for the warming shack for this winter, and we'll be discussing that in our upcoming meeting. And then the other thing is, we did have a presentation by Bar Engineering to put in a bike trail on the north side of St. James' Pit. They came in and made a presentation to Luke, myself, and several others in the community. And they have since sent us a proposal to lay out a bike trail. It'll come down to funding, and that's not our top priority. Our top priority is the warming shack at Pine Grove Park. So those are the two things that the park board has been going on.
It's cross-country, too?
Yeah. Why you can cross-country. The cross-country trails are already there, but they would expand on those type of thing. So we'll look for other funding for that. As I mentioned, we've got to get something going at Pine Grove for the warming shack.
Great. Splash fans off to a-
Looks like it. Coming's dirt. Yeah, I haven't talked to anybody that is in charge of that, but I mean, every time I go by, there's one, it's not raining. There's a tremendous amount of cars here.
Just got the parking lot got in there before the torrential rain, yeah, so. Anything further, counselor?
No.
No, thank you. Counselor Hanson?
Well, librarian covered most of what's been going on internally in the library, and I think maybe some of this facility study may bring some other ideas to the forefront, or to people's minds about maybe the future of the library along with other city buildings. So I guess, yeah, we'll just see what happens, see what the future brings there.
I know that your board tends to be progressive in thinking ahead, so I'm sure they're already tossing around ideas, right, so.
That's all, that's about it, right now.
That's it? All right, thank you, counselor. Hess?
The only thing I get is Public Safety Board. We've had interviews for sergeant positions. We interviewed four people. We had a meeting last week and went over them. We haven't made a selection yet. We probably will on our next board meeting next Monday, so we've got four there. I want to hats off to city crew and the summer help for even setup for the fourth, because it's a lot of work on their part, too, so. All I got.
Okay, just, I think everyone has it in their own minds, but just an amazing, thank you to all the good work from the Public Works Department, both for dealing with the flood challenges, which, as the city administrators so aptly put it, we dodged a bullet. And then also for the efforts of the city water staff in particular to help out Biwabik, enabling them to get through their water crisis. It was a challenging time for the general area, and I think we're, came out in full force to help out, to help our neighbors cope with it. So on the water board front, we're, projects progressing in the ground. We're still waiting for a Department of Labor and Industry approval. The work in scenic acres is really substantially complete, except for the segment between the highway and coming into the scenic acres area.
They have the trees down, they don't have all the water maintenance on scenic acres. They have, it's about 5,000 feet, they have probably 2,000 in the ground. None of that's been tested or pressure tested or anything like that. But most of Pineville's done, and most of the raw water intake lines is in the ground, so.
They're doing about 300 feet a day.
Yeah. They're cruising, so.
And the water treatment plant is still on track. It's just site clearing, right, and I think the major components have been hired, and the Department of Labor and Industry hitch there shouldn't really hold up the project. It's an internal plumbing review, and, you know, we've given approval to the contractor magnate to go ahead and do whatever they would do, anticipating, upon good advice, the Department of Labor and Industry approvals will come through there. Let's see. East Range Water Board, we got a very comprehensive legislative update from Paul Pilcher of the Rams Group. And I also was at the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Meeting, and what I'm going to try to do is get to the clerk staff, a lot of these two-page briefing memos that the league puts out, so that all of us can be informed on the legislation in particular, because citizens will be asking about what was accomplished and what's going to affect them. But Paul provided some of that anyway, and I can only say that we have a lot of information to digest, even though they didn't pass the bonding bill, which of course was a profound disappointment for everybody else. And then just to wrap up, just for those that are watching on TV, certainly want to encourage everybody to come out for the July 3rd celebrations, which actually starts this afternoon at 4 o'clock with the coronation event. And there's a lot of detailed information, both on the Celebrator Aurora site in the East Range Times, and we hope you all come out, enjoy it, and that for once, maybe isn't raining. So that concludes the mayor's report. Moving on to the agenda, Agenda Item 16, Old Business. 16.1 is the Street Name Contest. City Administrator?
Yep, so there's five names that have been picked. They have a pop-ups, I think we call them pop-up sessions or pop-up areas, where they're going to be around this weekend. There's a board out there, people can vote, put it in there. There's also an online feature where you can vote for that, and it's two of the top five names that are in there. So look for them to be around for the festival this week, and then also look online. There's, I believe on their website, they can hit a link and get to it there. So we're looking for those votes.
Very good. Any other counselors, any other questions, concerns on that issue? All right, so I gather we don't need to take any action.
Just enough information alone.
All right, and looking at 16.2, Text My Gov. We had a presentation in our agenda planning session just before this meeting. Are we anticipating any action today, or that'll be on the agenda maybe for action later?
It's up to the mayor and council, it's up to your decision if you want to table it again, if you want to choose to take action or no action. We do have our proposal from them, so if you want to sit and think about it for a couple of weeks, or if you want to go after it, it's totally up to you guys.
Make a motion to table at our next meeting.
Support? I'll support that. Supported by, made by Counselor Hess and supported by Councilor McClosage. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Matter's tabled. Moving on then to Agenda Item 17, New Business. 17.1, the old facility needs study presentation that we have in our packet. Abundant materials that certainly reflect that the firm's been up to a lot of work on this particular task, and I'll turn it over to you to make a presentation, right?
Mayor and council, it's good to be here. Again, just a reminder, John McNamara, old architects and engineers. So we have been working on two paths on this thing. One of them is a facility needs, on this facility need study, one of them is a condition assessment of the existing city facilities, and also, you know, how might we solve, you know, some of the space challenges that were identified during the project. So the presentation you have today is informational. You have the detailed report as well, and so we're hoping for any questions or feedback so that we can finalize this for you, so that you can use it as a planning tool as you look at investments in the future as well. So if you want to go to the next slide, our agenda for tonight is to talk a little bit about, you know, our planning process. We want to spend a bit of time on the facility assessments. We have a summary of the detailed report. In the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about some of the space needs, and then we went through a fairly robust recommendations phase where we looked at a bunch of different things, so those are included in there, along with some budgets for that, and certainly next steps. So where we are at today, if you go to the next slide, is we are down to the last couple of tasks in our study. We've gone through surveys, utilization, we've gone through the existing buildings and done that analysis, and we're really at that options phase right now, where we've really kind of studied what are the multiple things that you could consider, you know, not only reinvestment in existing buildings, but should you choose to replace buildings? And there are some buildings that we're recommending replacement versus reinvestment. And then, obviously, approval of the process and the report. So if you go to the next slide. So what we looked at and what the project goals were for this project was to identify current facility conditions and what deficiencies, kind of looking at not only the age of facilities, but handicap or accessibility. Expandability was also, you know, one of the things that we looked at as we looked at facility solutions, the condition of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems in the building site, and all of those things that go into your existing buildings. We did look at, looking at some of the future needs, whether that would be renovations in this, in your existing facilities. We also looked at reconstruction, and then, you know, are some of the co-locations and combined facilities that you have, are those what we should be looking at? We looked at some space needs, and what you'll find is much of the space needs are really due to process type stuff versus staffing in these buildings, you know, kind of best practices and stuff like that. So as we kind of look at the programmatic side of it, you won't notice a lot of changes on the staffing side of it, but many of the deficiencies we've looked at were size of existing spaces and how they're utilized. Next slide. So as we dig into kind of the facility assessment, the first building that we looked at was this building here, your City Hall Police and Library Facility. Much of this is probably not going to be a big surprise to, you know, yourselves and the people that are in here, but there are some significant reinvestments in this building that you should be considering, whether you renovate this building or not. Looking at the exterior of the building, we have, you know, the windows in the building are way past their expected useful life, and really should be fairly high on any sort of replacement consideration. They're hard to operate, they certainly aren't very secure, and they are energy poor at the best of those. And certainly, the roof is probably slated for a needs to be replaced on this building. There's lots of drainage issues and some of that type of stuff. We did look at the exterior of the building. There has been some water intrusion in certain areas, and potentially some of that's due to the windows on the building, and some of the brick joints are opening up, and, you know, we really should, as you fix some of the water infiltration issues, you'll probably want to look at the exterior envelope of the building, do some tuck pointing, and do some replacements. There is some deterioration along the accessible route that should be taken care of as well with some deteriorated block and some of that type of stuff on the exterior. Looking at the interior of the building, there are a number of accessibility issues in the building. Certainly, you have an elevator in here which will get you up to the various floors in the building, but we do have some non-compliance issues related to the bathrooms. One of the bigger ones is the women's facility that's off of the stair landing. As you come up here, you have to actually, even beyond the stairs, you have to step up into that space. You do have a single accessible restroom off of the main level, so that is a step in the right direction, but due to that change to that- the right direction, but due to that change to that restroom there, you've lost some capacity for plumbing fixtures in the building and one of the big challenges that we heard during the survey process was, you know, lack of facilities in this building and facilities of adequate size to accommodate meetings and that type of stuff. So as you look at any particular changes to this building, we would want to do a plumbing fixture count based on current code and see, you know, how this building kind of stacks up and that's really based on usage of the building, so as the usage changes, it's going to require some reinvestment in restroom facilities. We did take a look at some of the finishes in the building as well, ceilings, flooring, walls, that type of stuff. We did note that there has been some leaking in the building, so there are some ceiling tiles that kind of show some of that leakage in here. Most of the finishes are, you know, fairly old and could be updated and the carpet in the building is in poor condition. It's not only delaminating, but it's causing a safety issue with, you know, trip hazards and some of that type of stuff. And then as we look at the rest of the, there are some safety concerns that were noted as we went through, staff brought these up as well, some of the service counters are challenging as it relates to any sort of attack rating on them. The windows, while there are windows there, they're not very secure as far as the windows go and much of the casework in the building, the cabinets and stuff like that aren't accessible as far as height and accommodations for the public for the main service counter on the main level, that handicap portion of it is a table out in the lobby, so staff have to go out there if somebody is in a wheelchair to be able to serve those folks. We did look through the spaces up on this level with the Town of White space, some of the same issues that we noticed on the first floor related to the service counters, accessibility, some of the finishes, some of that type of stuff were noted in there. And then when we took a look at the police area, while there isn't a permanent police presence in this building, there is a need for some space in there to be able to detain people, book people, that type of stuff in our conversations. So with the chief kind of indicated that it's really challenging in there for various security reasons and stuff like that. The entry is pretty small in there, the one bathroom that's in there is woefully, you know, that needs some work just to be blunt about it. And there's really not a lot of separation in that office area, so there's not a lot of privacy if you're bringing in people into that area either for interviews or for booking purposes and stuff like that. So there is some changes in that area that are probably more programmatic and then there are some, just some basic facility issues in that area. For the library, similar issues in the library, that's in the rest of the building, we have some leakage in and around the windows in there. You know, the carpet is in poor condition in there. The restroom area needs some improvements, there was some leakage in that area and then there's some accessibility issues with drinking balance and other complaints in that area and then there were some programmatic things related to technology and some of that stuff that were noted in the walkthrough for the library. We did take a good look at the mechanical and electrical systems in the building. One of the things that was clear to us is that the air handling system, the boiler plant and that type of stuff were past its useful life and some of the ventilation issues in the building certainly should be addressed. As you look to do any changes in the building, you might need to look at a sprinkler system for this building, so that's something to consider. The electrical systems, just for the life safety side of it, the fire panels are out of date and should be looked at. Obviously for the audiovisual systems, those are things that could be improved as well. And then from an energy side of things, you know, many of the fixtures in the building are still fluorescent and it would be probably prudent to start looking at changing those out to LED fixtures. We did also go take a look at the community center. And the community center is a nice building, there are some things that were brought up that would like to, they would like to have addressed in the building. There was some discussions related to the flooring in there being a little bit slippery when it gets wet. While not necessarily a facility assessment component, there was some discussions related to an exterior canopy to get some weather protection and some outdoor space. There are some roof leakage issues and while we have some compliance in the restrooms are a bit outdated and to make them fully compliant would require some renovation in there. And then there were some discussions related to storage and the parking lot is in somewhat poor condition over there.
What is VCT?
That is the vinyl tile flooring, so that's the flooring material in there, yeah. And on the mechanical, electrical side of things, not a whole lot in there, just, you know, some basic maintenance things around the water heater. You could consider a sprinkler system in that building as well. And on the electrical side of things, just some updates to the receptacles and the fire alarm system in there and similar discussion related to the LED fixtures in there. We did take a look at the fire station that's on that same lot. Programmatically, we didn't spend a lot of time looking at modifications to that building. We really focused on some of the facility conditions out there related to the exterior doors. Some of the, we call it EFIS, but that's the plaster around the exterior of the building down by the base is not in the greatest condition. Carpet needs to be replaced in there. They did request it got replaced, to be replaced with something more durable in there like a wood floor. And then there are some areas of water damage from roof leakages in that building. The other building that we looked at, or that building from the mechanical, electrical side of things, needs a new water softener in there. The water heater should be replaced and providing some new gas-fired unit heaters in the garage and then look to start updating the condensing unit, it's still using R22. There's been a lot of refrigeration changes over the years that would probably necessitate replacing that unit with something that uses a different type of refrigerant in there. The fire alarm system should be updated in there, an emergency generator to tie in the life safety systems and then I guess there's some issues with some of the lighting control systems in the common area in there. For Public Works, so this is one of the sites that we were looking at more of a reinvestment and replacement as we get into there. Many of those buildings are in poor condition. The solid shed needs to be replaced, you know, many of the concrete aprons, they get a lot of abuse, so it's probably not too surprising out there that there are some concrete items that need to be replaced out there. And some of those metal buildings without having any gutters on them, it's really hard to direct the water appropriately on-site out there. From a programmatic side of things, you know, as, you know, those departments grow and they have more complex duties, some of those spaces in that building are undersized for the intended use and there's inadequate space for material storage in those buildings. You can see by some of these pictures in here, that's just stuff that gets tucked in where they can. Mechanically, again, this is a full replacement, recommendation here for the HVAC systems, water softening system and the domestic water heater in there. We are also suggesting new exhaust in that building and replacement of the overhead heating system in that building. Electrically...
Yeah, it's just built you on me here for no reason. There we go.
There we go. Electrically in there, we're recommending replacement of the, you know, load center electrical system in there, fire alarm systems, you know, the lighting systems. So there's probably very little in here that isn't suggesting replacement, so just be, keep that in mind as we go through the recommendations part of this. So there's a more detailed report, or more detailed assessment in the report that we provided you, this is a summary of the costs associated with each of the buildings. And so as we look at the City Hall building here that we're in right now, you can see much of the cost is really related to the full replacement of the mechanical systems in here. That's a fairly significant undertaking for a building of this age. It's roughly about $2 million to go through and do a full mechanical upgrade to this building. We've got about $150,000 in there for electrical systems, about $300,000 for some of the exterior replacements and about $350,000 for interiors in there. So you're looking at roughly about 2.8 million just on the deferred maintenance side for this building, which would bring it up to, you know, kind of current standards to reinvest in this building. The community center, we had a little over 700,000. Again, much of that is in the mechanical systems, although we did identify roughly about 370,000 to fix the bathrooms and some of those interior spaces that we had noticed there. We've got roughly about 550,000 for the fire station for those deferred maintenance items and a significant amount for Public Works building at roughly about $840,000 to fix some of those deficiencies out at that site. So our facility assessment total for all of the buildings based on what we identified is roughly about 4.9 million in fixing and repairing of the existing city facilities, which some of these things obviously have a higher priority than others, but this is an all-encompassing report for all of the conditions that we noted in those buildings. So we also went through a space needs assessment with city staff and this is broken out into your current existing utilization and then the planning column there is what we noted as far as what we would need to continue operating in these buildings long-term. As you look at the municipal building, the City Hall here, currently there's roughly about 16,800 square feet of space available in this building and looking at the staffing numbers, you can notice that we're really not changing the staffing by, you know, much. It just looks at adding some additional staff for the library over time, but many of the changes that you see here are operational-based as it looks at how we utilize office space, how we utilize lobby space, how do we look at meeting spaces and looking at how we would right-size some of the departments in this building. And so the square footage change in the building really is only about 1,000 square feet, but it's really is looking at how we can better utilize the existing space and accommodate some of the programmatic elements that we identified in there. For the fire station, there is currently roughly about 6,500 square feet of space being used there. I do notice we have a typo in there related to our net to gross factor, we'll fix that. But looking at the total square footage of the 7,600, that bears a little bit of explaining because one of the things that we had talked about was if we were to look at combining the fire station or moving the fire station someplace else, there are some best practices related to decon and, you know, health and wellness stuff that you currently don't have at that station, that if you were to rebuild it, you would probably add additional square footage to handle those changes, but if you leave the fire station where it is, we would be recommending just doing some of those deferred maintenance items. It doesn't make sense to try to add on and adapt that building to try to add some of those health and wellness things to it, just be given its age and some of that type of stuff. So when you look at the, kind of the reinvestment in facilities, that's the number that we had in the facility assessment and then as we look at potentially replacing it, if that's a direction that the city wants to go, that program would increase that building size to roughly about 7,600 square feet to add, you know, decontamination space, separate gear wash areas and some of that type of stuff that are really out in the apparatus area right now, so. The community center, much of the square footage change there is just related to storage space and adding some, right-sizing some of those interior spaces. And then Public Works is looking at what it would take to increase the size of the Public Works garage to meet some of the programmatic elements that we had talked about and then adding a sanitation garage as well. And so that's where much of that square footage comes for those items there. So we did look at a number of options including reinvesting in your current facilities, this building in particular, and how would we look at solving some of the space issues in here? And one of the things that we looked at is could we create an on-grade entry to this building to deal with some of the level changes and accessibility issues that we have in this building? And so we kind of focused on the north side of the building. This would require some significant conversations related to the alley access and parking and stuff like that because this is a very tight site, as you know, it's right up against the alley on the one side and then the street going east and west, but we did want to explore, is there a way that we could add on to this building? And so what we looked at doing was adding an addition onto the building which would move all of the city administration into a new addition on the north side, moving the public on-grade accessible entrance to that location as well, relocate the lobby and the museum into that area so that the public coming into the building would basically have a singular location where they could go to to get most of their city business conducted at. We would do some renovation to the library with moving city administration out of their current spaces. We could move the Town of White down to that level as well. And then with moving the lobby, moving the museum to the lobby area, that would allow us to fix some space for the police department in there. So all the things that are in this building would stay, we would just kind of reshuffle some things around. By moving the Town of White down to that main level, that would allow us to renovate the upper level. Do you want to go to the next slide? Because one of the things that we had talked about during our focus group meetings was having, you know, a larger training meeting room up on this level, so this would expand the boardroom into what's now the break room on the other side, giving a much larger boardroom for the city that could be used not only for the council meetings but other boards and commissions as well as training. East Range Joint Powers would stay where they are, but we would then renovate the area where the Town of White is to get a, some actual handicap accessible toilets on this level and get a break room for staff on the upper level. So we'd have much, much less public coming up to this level other than for public meetings and that type of stuff. So we also looked at a solution which would keep the footprint of this building as it is today. This one is labeled library relocation because in order to get the amount of space that we would need to right-size some of the other spaces in here, this would suggest that the library would get relocated to an alternate location, whether it's a rented space or an addition to another building. That would relocate them to an off-site location. This would allow us to renovate the existing library to again provide an on-grade entry off the north parking lot, provide a lobby in that location, relocate the museum and city administration spaces, still expand the PD and the, and move the Town of White down to this level. I should have noted before in all of these, this would expand the toilets on this, on that level as well to provide adequate toilets for those users. And then the upstairs would stay the same as what we had talked about before, which would expand the council chambers, the boardroom up on this level. So the other things that we looked at was are there sites in the city that would allow for a new City Hall library complex to be built elsewhere, which would then allow repurposing of this building for something else? And so there were two parcels that were identified and that would be large enough to accommodate that. So for this solution here and this site here, this would suggest a combined City Hall Library Facility on an off-site location, so this would be new construction, a new construction solution for that. So this would be new construction, a new construction solution for that. As we look at the Public Works site, that's obviously a fairly large parcel, but focusing in on where Public Works is today, it should be noted that this diagram needs to be updated because the water treatment facility is different than what we've got shown on here. But the idea is that there's enough room in this particular portion of the site to add a new Public Works facility and supporting structures for that, including a future sanitation garage. So Public Works really focused on using the current parcel that you have for that, but rebuilding the buildings that you have there into newer facilities. So obviously, the big question is, well, how much is, are all of these different solutions going to cost? So we did go through a cost exercise to understand what we think these various solutions would cost. So looking at this current building here, this would require about 8,000 square feet of renovation, about a 3,300 square foot addition, and then deferred maintenance work for the exterior of the building. I would note that the numbers that we have in here for cost per square foot would include the rest of the deferred maintenance stuff that we had talked about, carpets, flooring, not in carpet ceilings, lighting, mechanical work, all that type of stuff. So the deferred maintenance numbers are only those things outside of that which would be the exterior skin of the building. So we've identified in current dollars around $270 a square foot for renovation, about $450 a square foot for the addition, getting us in about $300,000 worth of deferred maintenance work, gets us to a little under $4 million in construction costs. Because there are ancillary costs for, you know, fees, testing contingencies, and that type of stuff, we do recommend a project cost multiplier of 32% to get you to a total project cost. That would include all of those ancillary costs so that it would be kind of your all-in number that you would look to finance for that. Would be roughly about $5.2 million for this option. For the relocation of the library, that would obviously reduce the amount of addition we would have to do. That would bring our construction cost down to about $2.4 million, $2.5 million, or a total project cost of $3.25 million for that. Keeping in mind, this does not address where the library would go. So that would have to be taken into consideration once that conversation occurs as well. And then there's always the question of, well, you know, what's the do-nothing? You know, but we still have investments to make in this building. And so if you, if you take the report that we put together, we have roughly a deferred maintenance cost of about $2.4 or $5 million to replace the mechanical systems, windows, finishes, that type of stuff. So all of those things that we had identified there. A slightly lower project cost number, about 25%, because we're not doing as much furniture and equipment and that type of stuff. Roughly about $3 million for just the reinvestment in this building. And then if we take a look at that, the new build options here, we're looking at those two sites and looking at that cost of about $450 a square foot for new construction. This would include city hall, the Town of White, the police, and the museum. So everything that's in this building today. Roughly about 1,200, 12,300 square feet would get us to a construction cost of about $4.6 million. It was a total project cost of about $7.3 million. And then adding the library in there would be roughly about another $3.2 million. So a total of about $10 million to rebuild this at a new location. And then same thing if we look at the Central Park site. So, you know, for these, the cost of the site is neutral. We're assuming utilities are there and that you can build on these sites without any problem. And then for the Public Works, so looking at the replacement of the Public Works building, we're looking at about $7.7 million to demolish the existing building and build a new 22,000-plus-square-foot facility. And we have roughly about $450,000 in there to replace the salt shed, about $2.8 million for a sanitation garage sometime in the future. And then one of the things that was asked is, well, what would it take to make that building bigger to add the city offices? Just the city offices part, not the Town of White or the library or any of that type of stuff? So roughly about 2,200 square feet would be roughly about $1.3 million. So we're trying to cover a bunch of different bases with some of this stuff. So I know that was a lot of numbers, a lot of data there. So what I would like to do is to throw it back to mayor and council for any questions or feedback, or if this needs to be digested for a while, we're happy to come back and discuss this, you know, further. But we're really at that point where we would like to get some feedback on the study, what we've discovered, what we're recommending, so that we can make any final adjustments to the facility report so that you can have a good planning tool as you look at kind of future funding and stuff like that. So.
Well, thank you. That was a lot to go through in a short period of time.
Yes.
I don't know what the council's preferences are. I think this is a great starting point. And thoughts rolling around in my mind anyway, or whether we should have kind of almost a workshop session to dive into it, because this is going to dovetail also into what's financially feasible as well as what's physically needed. And I wonder about citizen, you know, transparency again, showing what some of these options are, getting the public kind of brought along. Any thoughts from councilors? How we?
Yeah, on the public piece, I mean, would this be something that would potentially go to a referendum? As far as here are some options? Or is it just something that we decide on? Because I do think we, we're going to spend this kind of money, we're going to have to get the citizens involved at some point.
So I guess what you would do is you'd narrow it down to the plan, right? You'd have a decision where we're going to go. And then you would try and seek funding to help with that. Like, I'm not sure how much did Virginia get for their public safety building there?
They got roughly about $9.5 million from the legislature through one bonding bill. And then given all of the inflationary pieces, they were able to secure another $2 million in the last legislative cycle. So about $11.5 million total from the legislature for that. They are also working with USDA and, you know, IRRV as well.
So I would look at it like that. We would pick, this is what we want to do, this is our vision. We would spend the money to get that shovel ready and designed and ready to go. And then we would start seeking exterior funding to what we can do with the levy. And then you would kind of figure out, hey, we're at that point where it's fundable, and off we go.
So what would be preferable way to? I mean, I feel this is new to me. And a wonderful job of really laying out a little difficult joke on the numbers and things. But as we individually, councilors, should we focus our contacts with you in terms of questions, comments, alternative suggestions, things like that? I don't know the next step, but I could picture before the next meeting wanting to get back to you with just some questions and comments myself. I don't know, councilors?
Well, I think with all the different sites involved and depending on what is decided at one site could affect another site.
Yep.
And I think maybe after we look at all these different options, we need to develop a game plan where we're going to go first in the order before we can even begin to develop a financial plan for it.
Maybe we need as roving sight as it do, right? It wouldn't hurt to see some of these things firsthand.
One thing that will simplify this a little bit is you can almost remove the community center from it because we do have $637,000 sitting, waiting to be used. And that'll be part of our budget topics for trying to get that project up and running. So I think that money is almost in place to take care of that. So then you're just kind of looking at city hall, a little bit in the fire hall, Public Works. I think everybody knows Public Works Garage and City Hall are the two ones that really stand out. They really need help.
That City Works Garage, you know, you talk about tearing it down and building a new one, but is that building so bad that it couldn't be saved for cold storage?
Yeah, there are, obviously, there are nuances on each of these that would take further conversation with the council and with others to, you know, kind of decide, you know.
You know, if it is usable yet, it might make the new city garage a little bit more affordable. If you don't have to build cold storage area on the new one, then you can use the old one.
Yeah. And our report kind of focused on kind of a sequential replacement piece of it and looking at where a future sanitation garage would be. You might have to expand your site area that you're looking at just based on the location of some of the existing buildings and how, you know, you could, you know. Right now, our report tends to suggest you would, you know, keep that until you're ready to build the sanitation garage, and then you'd have to remove that in order to build that. But if, you know, again, it's just nuances to how you would approach that site development, so.
I just hate to spend money to tear it out of a building that maybe we could have used.
And if we went with a decision to move out of this building, would we still have to spend the 4.9 million to upgrade it for the next 10? Or would we just do something else with this building? You know, I mean, so if we're going to spend this money on all these other buildings, these new buildings for the city hall and whatever, what would our liability be in this building as far as having to upgrade it before another tenant could move in? The 4.9?
Only what you would negotiate with them. I think it's, you know, I don't think there is a requirement that you upgrade the building beyond what you need to function for a city. Like, if this is going to be years down the road, there are probably some deferred maintenance things that you're going to want to deep up.
Preservation.
Right. I mean, the biggest challenge for these buildings is water intrusion. And so the more water that you can keep out of the building, the longer you can maintain it. And so it gets just down to the condition of the building when you're looking at selling it or bringing in another tenant into it.
Are there options for, I mean, consideration, this is Aurora, but we're doing so many things cross-range. It always struck me, and not bringing any knowledge to the table on maintenance and Public Works garages, but that bays for working on things, tools that need to be worked on, seldom-used pieces of equipment. It just strikes me that there might be opportunities to create some kind of a joint facility. It, I guess, I speak with no operational knowledge of Public Works and so on, but it, unlike other parts of the state, this area in particular is engaged in a lot of joint efforts because of our proximity. So just that's, they go out there. It's always nice to have friends sharing the filter dinner.
Mayor, to your original question, I think there are a lot of typical next steps. You touched on a number of them, which is one certainly go through. And if you've got questions on them, I would suggest feeding them to Luke so that, you know, we have a conduit for some of that information so that we can then kind of get a consolidated viewpoint on it from the entire council. And again, I would encourage a work session to talk through the various ideas. And we're happy to attend and answer questions. We didn't do this in a vacuum. We did have a committee that we worked with to kind of hone in on what recommendations are. But you all each have a different viewpoint that you might bring to the table that we hadn't thought of, whether that's consolidation, sharing, a different site location, any of that type of stuff. We can certainly offer feedback and advice on that as well.
So there's, you're not actually asking for any action. This is primarily launching the, so, councilors, anything further on this item? Well, thank you again so much, you and your first, bringing expertise. So, let's see, moving on, the agenda, 17.2, community center parking lot. You seem to request city administrator, what's this?
Yep. So we just had a gentleman reach out to us who would like to use space in the community center parking lot for a softball fundraiser for their team. They are working with Aaron's, the Aaron's building next door for utilities for water. They've secured that. They're just asking for a couple more so they can post a volunteer fundraiser in the parking lot. Just space.
I'd make the motion. That made bonkers, you said, parking lot.
I'll second that.
This has made the motion, Elsie McClosick, who supported it.
Team. That's the name of their team.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion's adopted. 17.3, THC cannabis moratorium draft ordinance. I believe that Lindsay indicated this is something that should be tabled.
Yeah, this is just informational only, just to bring it up in discussion. There's two members of the cannabis community here, I'll let them speak as well too. But we're just getting to that point where the moratorium's coming up here. We met with, I've met with some owners in town and on some businesses. We're just looking for feedback and input on the draft ordinance.
Now, the buzz at the Lake of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference was everybody's focused on this. It's a work in progress, but it passed along to Lindsay a detailed manual essentially that they've produced by the Lake of Minnesota Cities that I think we're getting more guidance from a lot of sources. And she said she's been working, what, directly with one of the law firms recommending?
Yes.
By Lake of Minnesota Cities to make sure that what we do is not only policy-wise, but pragmatically able to be done. So what, can we just regard that as informational and study the ordinance?
I would table it till the next meeting. I think there might have to be some action like the moratorium ends the end of this month.
Oh, really?
Okay. All right. Motion to table?
Make motion to table 17.3.
Motion by Councilor Hess, supported by Councilor Godey. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. 17.4, warning the bid for the Central Avenue pavement repairs. This matter was discussed in our previous agenda setting meeting. And city engineer, do you want to review maybe the, what appears to be the successful bidder?
Yeah. So as noted at the agenda setting meeting, KGM was the low bidder with a bid of approximately?
Hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven. Well, so there's a correction on that. Their math was off on one of the unit prices, so we corrected that. It was 111,000.
Okay.
So.
And which firm was that?
KGM Contractors.
Okay.
And so what this would be, would be the official notice of award to them, to award them the contract. So upon that, we would have, you know, authorization to enter into agreement to move that project forward. So that's the pavement repairs on Central. So we're taking out five feet, going down to the subgrade, putting new gravel back in and building it to get those bumps out, so.
I'll make a motion to award Central Avenue project to KGM.
Motion by Councilor Hess.
All support that.
Supported by Councilor McClosick. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion's adopted. 17.5 on the agenda, resolution 2024, day of 47. Delegate WCA authority, city administrator, do you want to explain that?
Yep. So this is Watershed Wetland Conservation Act. Wetland Conservation Act. Currently, our very capable past administrator, Britt C. Venice, is that designee. I don't believe she's been here since, it's going to be like 2015. So we need to update that. And since Volun Inc. is now our city engineer, we're asking that they are representative for that, for our projects.
A motion to designate Volun Inc. for that position?
I'll make that motion.
Move by Councilor Godey, supported by Councilor Hess. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, the resolution is approved. 17.6, approve industrial park construction management proposal. Let's see, city engineer?
Yeah. So we came to council in, I think it was December or January, with the design proposals, scope of work. So now we're through the GMP price with Adelson Peterson. So this is just the construction services piece of the project. So we'll be out there onsite with AP, monitoring the contractor.
So we'll be out there onsite with AP, monitoring the contractor, tracking where things are getting installed, how they're getting installed. We'll have someone onsite pretty much the duration of the project, just making sure that the city's best interest is kept in mind, so.
City administrator, do you want to chime in with, assuming you would recommend approving that proposed?
Yeah, I would. And again, keep in mind, these are funds that would be covered all under the IRRB grant, so that's where the funds would come from for this.
Yep. It'd be hourly not to exceed, so if we don't use the budget, you guys, you know, you're not liable for that cost.
Would it be Jordan that's going to be doing, doing that as well? So we're familiar with Jordan as well.
So is there a motion?
I mean, we approved 17.6.
Move by industrial park. Councilor Hanson, support. Support by Councilor Hess. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries, and we have our construction management team in place. So 17.7, the IUOE Local 49 Agreement, opening, the opening salvo of contract negotiation here, right? So do we need to have something to acknowledge, at least?
Yeah. We should acknowledge the receipt of that, and that we are going to open up the negotiation process.
I'll make that motion to acknowledge the receipt and open the negotiations.
Move by Councilor McClosage, is there support?
Supported.
Supported by Councilor Gode. And any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Hanson. All right. Any further discussion on that? All right. If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, so we're into contract negotiation. All right.
Is there other committee on that, just so there's some direction, or what typically are you going to?
We have a committee that was, the, the start of the year.
Oh, was appointed to do that? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Anticipating that, yeah, it would be going on. Under other, any other business?
What about this NDS one that's in our package?
I believe that's part of Josh's construction committee.
Is that part of yours?
Part of the construction.
The NTS, BTS, they're, they're included as our sub方案. So, work with them, and then they'll invoice through us. We don't work up.
So anything else we missed?
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, you're good.
Well, it's good, yeah. Make sure we deal with our business.
I do have one other thing under other, with the attorney's blessing. We, Sarah Ashkado was here at the Misawi Trail, asked for a letter of support to be signed by our mayor, and she came here and presented, and it's kind of time conscientious for them to get their funding. They'd like it sooner than later, so with, with your approval, the mayor can sign that and look at that up.
This is the, moving to White Lakes and?
Yeah, we're just saying that we support the project.
Support the project.
This is all we're doing, and this is the extension, the Misawi Trail extension, for them to try and get funding. We're just saying.
So is there a motion to authorize me to send that letter?
I'll make the motion.
Move by Councilor Hess, supported by Councilor Hanson. And any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, that matter passes. Any other matters through the attention? Counselors, anything else? If not, let's see, we're scheduled to, oh, there, yeah, just under our next regular meetings, Tuesday, July 9th, is going to be the St. Louis County Highway 100 project meeting at the Aurora Community Center, at which we'll probably have a quorum, so I think that's the reason notice was given of that. And our budget working session is July 11th, and Tuesday, the 16th, is our regular special agenda setting meeting. So with those considerations in mind, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
One thing on that, we're also going to post for a 3 o'clock meeting, because that's the agency meeting that day. So the 6 o'clock is the public meeting, which we're expecting, maybe one in the tent. There's all, it's the same meeting, but what they do is they break into three separate meetings that day. 1 o'clock is the business, businesses can come in and present and listen to that. At 3 o'clock is the agency meeting, which would be like the school or service ourselves, railroad. So we'll, we'll also change that to 3 o'clock as well, and then 9 o'clock for the public, or 6 o'clock for the public, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm sure we'll get abundant updates.
Yeah, you'll get a bunch.
I believe there is a motion on the table, to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor McClosage, supported by Councilor Hess. Any further discussion? If not, we stand adjourned, and you're all invited to come over to the Aurora Quorum. We should please.